Before we begin, I will go over the emergency response plan for the room. In an emergency, everyone must evacuate through the nearest safe exit. Those seated in the gallery will take direction from security and council will take direction from myself. After evacuating the room, please proceed to a stairwell, take the stairs to ground level and evacuate the building through the doors marked emergency exit and go to the muster point. Do not take an elevator or walk through the city room. Anyone with limited mobility should identify themselves to security or myself and please speak with security or myself if you require first aid. Thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to acknowledge that we meet on the traditional land of TD six territory and the Mity homeland and acknowledge the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors footsteps have marked this territory for centuries such as Cree, Dene, Sotu, Blackfoot, Nikora, Nikora Iska, as well as Mity and Inuit now settlers from around the world. Uh, we will do a roll call of council colleague, Constable Wright.
Good morning.
Constable Nack.
Good morning.
Constable Prince Bay.
Good morning.
Constable Stevenson.
Good morning.
Constable Paquette.
Good morning.
Constable Tang.
Good morning.
Constable Hamilton.
Good morning.
Constable Rutherford.
Morning.
Constable Salvador.
Good morning.
Constable Cartmel.
Good morning.
Constable Rice.
Good morning.
And Constable Janz.
Good morning.
Everyone is. Everyone is here. Uh, adoption of the agenda, Constable Hamilton, you have the.
Yeah, I'll move that the May sixth twenty twenty five city council non-regular meeting agenda be adopted.
Need a seconder?
Second.
Constable Rice, seconded, please vote.
In, in favor.
Thank you, Constable Janz.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Constable Hamilton. We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. Any protocol items? Other than one already on the agenda, which is next, okay. Uh, select items for debate. Alberta Munee reps, you wanna select something, I guess, right? Constable Nack.
Uh, thank you. Yes, I will select five point one and we also need to select seven point one, so I'll grab that while we're here.
Okay. All right, so that five one and seven one are selected. Uh, nothing to vote on for the remaining items. Uh, request to speak, we don't have any. Request for specific time on the agenda, no. Uh, vote on bylaws, not selector for debate, we don't have any. Uh, reports to be dealt with at a different meeting, none. Request to reschedule reports, none. We are going into first public reports, which is five one. Alberta municipalities protocol update verbal report and we have a delegation joining us. Uh, I wanna welcome all of you on behalf of council and we will pass on the, the proceeding to you to introduce the delegation as well as make a presentation.
Good morning. Thank you, your worship. Uh, thanks again for inviting us to provide our annual update. I am joined today by my colleagues from our executive comember committee who will share in providing our brief update and then we will look forward to taking your questions and I'll have Constable Nack introduce here if you'd like.
This is my one, one job to do here, so I hopefully don't screw it up. Uh, so yes, uh, I'm here to welcome just all of our representatives from Alberta municipalities and some of the team here from Alberta municipalities. We have, uh, Oilers super fan Mayor Tyre Tyler Gandom president. Uh, he forgot his jersey by accident, but he is the biggest fan. Yeah, his tie, his tie matches the Oilers colors, so if, uh, just for the record, Oilers super fan Tyler Gandom. Uh, we have Counselor Peter Devong, Vice President and Director of Cities over five hundred thousand. Deputy Mayor Trina Jones, Vice President and, uh, Director of Towns. We have Deputy Mayor Deborah Reed Mickler, Vice President and Director of Villages and Summer Villages. Counselor Dylan Bressi, Vice President and Director of Cities up to five hundred thousand. I don't actually know why I had to read it from the list. I just could have said it and looked at each of you, but I was like, I'm gonna make, make him mess up the name, so. Uh, I'm also.
It's happened before.
Yeah, we have messed up names before. Uh, and of course, I'm also on the board, but today I'm here wearing my counselor hat, not my board hat. Uh, for the Alberta municipality staff that we have just a few rows back. Um, unfortunately, our CEO Dana Mackey could not make it today. I hear he has laryngitis, so that doesn't make it really easy to have a chat. Um, we have Rachel DeVos, who is the Chief Policy and Advocacy Officer. We have Ashley Morgan, Chief Marketing and Communications Officer, and we have Jeff Haddonwood, the Senior Director of Policy and Advocacy, and that's really all I have to do. Back to Oilers super fan Tyler Gandom.
Nope, that's fine. Uh, I just politicians have a bad reputation for being liars and I think that it's just fair that Andrew Nack just bolsters that stereotype. Uh, the city of Edmonton has representation on many of our standing policy committees. Through these committees, you help to shape AB Munee's policy and advocacy on top priorities. We benefit from the expertise that your counselors and admin provide and I hope you benefit from the information and networking opportunities provided at these committees. I know our administration particularly appreciates the strong working relationships we have with your administration in your intergovernmental affairs office. Our new CEO Dana Mackey appreciates the strong working relationship he has been able to establish with your city manager. Edmonton's active participation with our association informs our advocacy efforts and helps us align on positions and priorities. Over the last several months, we have seen many advocacy wins, some of which I'll highlight this morning. In two thousand nineteen and twenty, the government of Alberta implemented a policy change whereby funding to municipalities for services to provincial properties would be caught, it would be cut to fifty percent of the eligible property tax amount, a change that disproportionately impacted Edmonton. Building on Edmonton's advocacy campaign, AB Munee's and our members made the case that the province should contribute its fair share to cover the infrastructure and services that municipalities provide to provincial properties, just like any other property owner. We are pleased the province listened. Starting in twenty twenty five and twenty six, GPOT funding will be paid to municipalities at seventy five percent of the property tax amount that would be owed, equal to fifty five million dollars and next year it will increase to a hundred percent. As the city with the most provincially owned properties, this is a notable win for the city of Edmonton. At our twenty twenty four spring MLC, members passed an RFD calling for AB Munee's to advocate for increased capital grant funding for new nonprofit and municipally operated childcare facilities. On January thirtieth, twenty twenty five, the governments of Canada and Alberta announced fifty three million in funding over two years in the building blocks capital grant program. Through the program, licensed nonprofit and public childcare providers, including municipalities, were able to apply for one-time capital funding aimed at supporting the creation of new full-time early learning and childcare spaces and a new and existing facility-based childcare program. As of April first, twenty twenty five, the province has reverted to its former policy on how interest rates are set for provincial loans to municipalities. We are pleased that the province has reversed its approach on capital lending for local authorities. Over time, this will save municipalities and property taxpayers millions of dollars to build infrastructure projects in communities across Alberta. We are pleased that our conversations with Premier Danielle Smith, President of Treasury Board and Minister of Finance Nate Horner and Minister of Municipal Affairs Rick MacIver resulted in this decision. In December of twenty twenty four, Environment and Protected Areas released an update, updated municipal policies and procedures manual. This revised manual includes many recommendations from the twenty twenty two AB Munee's wastewater innovation task force, including updates focused on reducing red tape for municipalities and simplifying the process for municipalities to adopt new and innovative water infrastructure technologies. In twenty twenty three, AB Munee's and the cities of Edmonton and Calgary sent a letter to the Premier and Minister of Justice seeking action to prevent catalytic, catalytic converter theft. Last year, AB Munee's participated in provincial engagement sessions regarding scrap metal and catalytic converter theft. We were therefore pleased to see that Bill forty nine introduced last month takes steps to address these issues. AB Munee's asked the provincial government to create a wildfire prevention committee to address coordination and other issues between municipalities and the province when it comes to wildfire prevention and response. The province has responded by creating the provincial fire liaison committee, which is intending to address issues around coordination, training and other emerging wildfire issues. AB Munee's has a spot on the committee as well as representatives from Edmonton and Calgary's fire services. With that, I'll turn it over to Trina.
Good morning. While Tyler had the good news about our wins, I have a slightly less positive note. The provincial priorities act was proclaimed in late February and went into effect on April first. Under the regulations, municipalities and municipal entities must submit information on all new agreements with the federal government, including amended and renewed agreements to the Minister of Municipal Affairs for approval. Certain agreements will be exempt from that approval, including agreements valued under a hundred thousand dollars. Exempt agreements must still be submitted to the minister for the exemption to apply, though. Agreements worth more than five million dollars will require approval from cabinet. Last spring, AB Munee's expressed concern about the legislation to the provincial government and President Gandom and members of the AB Munee's Executive Committee met with Premier Smith and Minister MacIver to share a review of what the government of Alberta should consider when developing these regulations. They suggested that the province should set a high threshold for federal agreements that would be subject to the provincial review and approval, build administrative machinery necessary to review agreements and funding opportunities that come forward on an expedited basis, set clear parameters, guidelines and definitions as to what Alberta's provincial priorities are, make effective and, sorry, make active efforts to encourage municipal, post-secondary and other public agencies to continue to pursue those federal opportunities and embrace the fact that Albertans will expect their provincial government to provide matching funds for federal grants and programs which align to the provincial priorities. And the last thing was to develop and maintain productive relationships with the federal government. On March twenty sixth and April third, Municipal Affairs hosted online information sessions to discuss the intake and approval processes for federal grant agreements and provide the opportunity for department, department representatives to explain the new requirements being implemented under the PPA. At those sessions, we learned that the regulation assessment criteria the provincial governments use, namely. At those sessions, we learned that the regulation assessment criteria the provincial governments use, namely whether the agreement aligns with provincial priorities, whether it interferes with constitutional authority, or interferes with the Alberta fiscal plan. Municipal Affairs will coordinate submissions with the most appropriate ministry. And applicants can, can contact Municipal Affairs and submit a draft agreement and program requirements to request more information. At this time, though, the province is unsure of the turnaround times as they don't have a handle on how many agreements will be submitted. A truncated cabinet, cabinet process to deal with larger agreements, those above the five million dollar threshold, is being developed. Joint contribution agreements where the province is providing funding are not subject to these regulations. Minister MacIver has repeatedly indicated that he does not want to see municipalities lose out on a single legitimate penny, and we will hold the Alberta government to that commitment. That, I will pass it to Deborah.
Thank you, Trina. Advocating for improved access to affordable housing as well as the supports and services needed to maintain housing and prevent homelessness is a strategic priority for AB Munis. The pressing need for investment in affordable housing is highlighted by the number of related resolutions recently passed by AB Munis members. And I think there's a few more coming. We currently have seven active resolutions related to affordable housing and homelessness. Budget twenty twenty five allocates three hundred and forty-three million to programs that support social, specialized, and affordable housing, including rental assistance. This is an increase of twenty-three million, seven point two percent from twenty twenty four, twenty five. While AB Munis appreciates provincial efforts to increase, to increase funding for affordable housing, this target will only meet the needs of fifteen percent of Alberta households living in core housing need. AB Munis will continue to call for federal and provincial investments to ensure all Albertans have a place to call home. With respect to market housing, municipalities in Alberta, particularly Edmonton and Calgary, have been leading Canada in terms of approvals and getting housing built. We have been actively engaging in provincial consultations related to enabling growth and housing affordability to champion the efforts of Alberta municipalities and dispelling the myths that municipalities in Alberta are obstacles to development, because it is a myth. With rapid population growth, increasing housing supply will remain a priority for us and the province. And with that, I will pass it over to councillor Bressy.
Last year, Alberta municipality members passed a resolution calling for the government of Alberta to immediately increase provincial funding for family and community support services, FCSSS. If FCSSS funding had been adjusted for inflation and population growth since two thousand fifteen, then the funding should be over one hundred and sixty million this year. But instead, the funding has remained at a hundred and five million for the last three years. Alberta municipalities met with Minister Nixon in February to reiterate our request to see this funding increase with population inflation. While the minister cautioned us not to expect increased funding in budget twenty twenty five, which we did see not happen, he did mention that he is interested in learning more about how local FCSSS programs are introducing efficiencies and providing cost-effective programming. So we are working with other associations to communicate the value and impact of FCSSS to the provincial government. We've partnered with the FCSSS Association of Alberta to promote, promote their new website, impact.fcsaa.org, if anybody wants to check it out, and boost key messaging through Alberta municipalities communication channels. We will also be participating in this year's FCSAA regional meetings to show our support and explore other means of joint advocacy with that important organization. Additionally, we have partnered with RMA to share the recent report on the challenges facing rural FCSSS offices and second the report's recommendations. Given Minister Nixon's interest in efficiencies and cost effectiveness, we do believe there's an opportunity to emphasize the cost savings resulting from preventative social programming. So we will be continuing, continue to be very active on this pile. With that, I'll hand it over to Peter.
Bernie, kind of itchy too. Advocacy on financial matters is infused in almost everything we do. Advocating for an increase in the local government fiscal framework, capital funding, has been our primary focus over the past several years. We believe this is the best method of supporting municipalities because the formula allows you to know your infrastructure funding years in advance, and so your city can plan accordingly. But we all know that the LGFF capital started hundreds of millions of dollars below historical funding levels. So we will continue to advocate for an increase in LGFF capital funding. But we are broadening our efforts related to municipal finance by initiating a research project that is designed to inform Albertans. It is our view that we need to help Albertans understand the path we are on. Lower funding means higher property taxes, or changes in what services Albertans receive. We want Albertans to be more aware of the current funding trends and what this will mean for their community and their property tax bill. We want Albertans to be informed so that when they're chatting with their local MLA, they are prepared to talk about their priorities for their community and what role the province should play. That, this is why we are shifting our advocacy to help every day Albertans join the conversation that municipal leaders have been having for years. Our project started in September looking at nine different topics. For example, we will be releasing findings, findings on the breakdown of how much tax the average Albertan pays to their municipality versus to the province versus the federal government. We will be releasing documents to help Albertans understand what government provides, provides each public service. We plan to show tangible examples of how inflation is impacting, what municipalities buy, and how some services have been downloaded onto municipalities. We are comparing Alberta to other provinces to show Alberta's scope of infrastructure is different and why per capita comparisons with other provinces doesn't tell the full story. Alberta is also experiencing significant population growth, and we need to talk about what that means for municipal budgets. The federal election has consumed a lot of attention over the last month or so, but we plan to start releasing some of our findings in the coming months. And back to Tyler.
Thanks very much. I'd also like to update you on what's happening with active resolutions that were sponsored by the city of Edmonton. The status of the fall twenty twenty three resolution on e-scooters is that the Ministry of Transportation and Economic Corridors has complete, has completed an evaluation of the pilot programs that were ran in Edmonton and other municipalities. And the minister aims to share the results of that evaluation and future plans. In response to the resolution regarding provincial support for downtowns, business districts, and main streets, the Minister of Jobs, Economy, and Trade, Matt Jones, details several steps the government of Alberta has taken to support downtowns and main streets, including ten million dollars to assist downtown revitalization in both Calgary and Edmonton in budget twenty twenty two. Flexibility in the LGFF program to support streetscape improvement projects contributing to downtown vitality such as signs, street lighting, and sidewalks, as well as flexibility to direct LGFF funding towards projects supporting existing and new businesses and industrial districts, including rehabilitation and construction of road, water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure. The ability to pass a bylaw to form a business improvement area or a BIA to advance commercial vibrancy in, in a specific area. The Community Revitalization Levy, or the CRL, program is, is a financial tool which can be used to revitalize an area where redevelopment is hindered due to significant and persistent barriers. In respect to changes to the Clean Energy Improvement Plan, over the last year, AB Munis hosted various member engagements focusing on Edmonton's suggested changes to the Clean Energy Improvement Plan to better understand how they will affect other municipalities with active C programs. These engagements are now complete, and advocacy staff are working to bring these findings to their respective ministries. And lastly, in terms of the resolution on advancing action on Alberta's drug poisoning crisis, I think we all know how challenging this issue is and that there are different views on how this should be handled. As noted in the resolution, best practices in public health recommend a four-pillar model for drug and substances strategies, prevention, treatment, harm, and enforcement, sorry, harm reduction and enforcement. With the introduction of the Compassionate Intervention Act, the province has reaffirmed its commitment to recovery and enforcement while reducing and or eliminating support for prevention and harm reduction. Although AB Munis appreciates the government of Alberta's significant investment in recovery, meetings with the mental health and addictions chief of staff and deputy minister have not been productive with respect to increasing provincial support for prevention or harm reduction. We also have many concerns around whether involuntary treatment is effective, given the lack of evidence or even consultation. Each summer, AB Munis hosts our Summer Municipal Leaders Caucus in different locations around the province. This format allows our members to sit down with fellow leaders from their region and discuss common issues affecting their communities. Summer MLC is our least formal event focused on fostering a day of discussion among our members. The caucuses are scheduled for the second and fourth weeks, weeks of June, as shown here, and will be starting down south in Picturebutte and concluding in Devon. Our discussions will be topical and registration is now open. Thanks for helping us host a wonderful convention in twenty twenty three. In twenty twenty five, we look forward to welcoming our members back to the Calgary Convention Centre, November twelfth to fourteenth, before returning to Edmonton in September of twenty twenty six. We are putting together a dynamic agenda that will provide opportunities for members, particularly new members, to get to know, to get to know the government, take part in practical sessions dealing with topical issues and debate resolutions, including any Edmonton council decides to bring forward. So we thank you again for the opportunity to provide you with an update, and with that, I'll turn the floor back over to the chair for discussion and questions.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation and also, uh, thank you so much for your advocacy on behalf of, uh, all municipalities and, uh, working with us on a number of initiatives, we really, really appreciate that ongoing collaboration. And with that, we're going to open for questions, uh, from council colleagues. Councillor Nak, you exempted this, you want to start?
Start by moving, uh.
Sure.
We received information.
Yeah, yeah, keep, alright, and councillor. Councillor Tang seconded it.
Second.
Yep. Uh, alright, Councillor Stevenson, go ahead.
Um, great, well, thank you so much, really, really value the ongoing work, uh, that you all do. It's, um, it's great to see, again, strength in, in members, and the numbers, I think, really, really, uh, matter a lot, so thank you. Uh, I'm really excited to hear about the municipal finances, uh, research project and just helping build that literacy for, for Albertans. One, one challenge that I, I come up against quite frequently is we, we tend at the city level to have a lot of that information broken down by household. But, but it's a bit murkier on the business side of things, uh, so commercial property taxes versus, you know, just the, the whole, um, commercial taxation regime. Wondering if there's scope for that as, as part of this work to help explain to businesses, um, how they pay taxes different of orders of government and, and the services they get in, in response.
We are going to be focusing on the residential portion because it's more holistic across the province. The commercial side of things can be a lot more difficult because of the different grades, the different levels of commercial entities. So I know that, for example, Calgary and Edmonton are really quite different in how we're attacking our, our, our commercial responsibilities. So I, it, it's going to be far more intricate and detailed to try and do that. That is something that we will probably discuss as going forward after we roll out the residential portion.
Okay, great, yeah, I mean, it is a lot to, to tackle, and I think starting with the residential is a great, is a great, uh, starting point. Just in terms of some of the, the conversations that you've had, um, just around addictions and mental health, um, I, you may have heard that we recently passed a motion here asking our staff to help document what those gaps are in our community, so how many detox spaces are we short? You know, how much, uh, even the types of supervised consumption spaces, for example, inhalation versus injection. Um, so hopefully that's, that's very complimentary work, uh, to what you're doing, but I think helping to quantify some of that will be important. I'm wondering too, if there's been conversation, um, again, sort of recognizing the province's priority around recovery, but also sort of speaking about that pre and post-recovery, sort of the ins and outs of the system. You know, I, I've come across a number of, of very heartbreaking stories of people going through the whole process, going through recovery, and being discharged into homelessness. Um, so is that part of, part of the conversations that are happening?
Yeah, absolutely, um, I think the overall solutions that all municipalities are looking for include that full wraparound service. Um, the city of Otaasquen is no different than any of the big cities we have here in Alberta, out in Alberta or across Canada. And having that ability to have, um, housing or supports following treatment, uh, for any individual is really important. And I think that that speaks to the conversations, conversations we need to have with Minister of Addictions and Mental Health. Um, but yeah, it's not going to be a, a one solution's going to fix all, it's going to be a broad-based and, and kind of finding and meeting people where they're at in terms of their recovery process and understanding that they'll have relapse and, and we'll get back into starting from the beginning again. But there has to have that, that ability to start from the beginning again, all the way through to where a person might end up afterwards. And we got to make sure that we have that covered as well, so for sure.
Yeah, absolutely, no, it's a really beautiful point, and we have, we have a local organization that we can, just over that way, um, Nigga Dan Housing Ventures, they talk about an indigenous recovery model, which is focused on recovery, focused on sobriety, but continues to sort of hold people as they go through those ins and outs, um, in a single program rather than, you know, kind of falling out, having to come back in again, so, you know, I think those models are out there and the success is demonstrated. Maybe just lastly, um, you know, we're seeing a lot of, um, legislation that's impacting our, uh, local, uh, electoral politics. Um, obviously, the, the interaction of parties, um, this fall in Calgary and Edmonton. Is AB Munis planning to be providing any sort of reflections post-election or sort of commentating on, on the new regime?
Sorry about that, I just wanted to jump back really quickly to your questions about recovery and addictions. Um, we met with Red Deer Blackfolds in Pinoka a couple of weeks ago, and as you know, well, probably know, they have the recovery centers and the Rising Sun centers down there. Um, so just, they're, they're looking for partners in advocacy on these things as well. So if you would like, uh, touch base with them, with the mayor's there, they're very on top of it, or even talk to me and I can put you in touch with them, as far as the big cities stuff, I'm, I'm going to give that back to the big cities.
Well, you know, I'm running out of time, but.
Yeah, why don't you come back to that question, uh, in the second round, Councillor Stevenson, Councillor Wright.
Thank you, I'm just wondering if you can maybe help me wrap my head around, um, or, or give me some insight as to, to why the province is neglecting that, what I think to be a key, important piece of prevention. Um, you know, the, the huge and growing gap, uh, in FCF, uh, FCSSS funding, um, the focus being on the recovery model rather than the, you know, prevention and dealing with mental health, uh, especially in light of our, our, um, our Alberta hospital now is being changed over from a mental health facility to a recovery facility. Any insight can. Do they not see sort of the downstream impacts?
If, if I was able to read into the minds of our provincial government, we would be, I would be able to explain it far better. Uh, I think it just comes down to ideologies, um, what the province might feel as the best route to, um, try to get into that prevention piece of it, as well as recovery. Um, is di- obviously different than what the ideology of the city of Edmonton, city of Otaasquen, city of Calgary, and thereon out has for what's going to work, and I think that's why it's important that we convey those. How we, how we share with what we have for what's going to work in our communities, because it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all. And I think it's important that they understand how these recoveries are going to best be suited in each of our communities because it's going to be different from across the province.
And is there any sort of like costing out of, of what the cost is for not addressing these concerns? I mean, here in Edmonton, we're faced with, um, you know, with issues in our downtown that are, you know, the direct result of not having the housing, not having proper mental health supports, is there any? Any facts that we can provide, uh, to the province?
If you have them, absolutely. If you have those costs that are associated with what, um, the lack of services is having as an impact for your municipality, I think that would be a great start. And I, I think you would see other municipalities coming forward with those kinds of stats. It's easy to show your police investment, time that they've spent. Um, but I don't know how you'd be able to put a dollar figure to the economic development or the, the stall in economic development because of the social issues that we're experiencing in our communities.
So I'm looking to Miss Flammen. Do you have the magic bullet?
I, I, I do not have a magic bullet, my apologies.
If, if I, if I may, something else I'd add with this is when we talk to provincial government about prevention often, especially when we're highlighting services that have been dropped, we're not hearing back, oh, we disagreed with that service, just, well, we've changed the, we've changed the mandate of this department and it no longer fits in with that mandate. And it almost seems like prevention is being forgotten in many cases as well. And it is one of those cases of the province is trying to do a lot, it's trying to do it aggressively, and often with the consultation coming after changes are made, not before. And I know a big part of what we've been working on is make sure that we're connecting with our members to hear the stories in communities, big and small, across the province, and hearing where those problems are falling out and helping the province understand them so that hopefully, when that post-concentration happens, it can be addressed. And that is a big part of what I think our role is, is make sure those stories of where prevention is being dropped or falling behind are shared with the province and so that we can help. It's hard to get data of how do you quantify the economic impact of these issues, but we sure can get the stories. And with our premier especially, those stories really do seem to matter.
And the stories, I did pull up the website that the, um, impact dot FCSAA dot org. Um, and you're showing more the positive, on that site is more the positive impact, right? Yeah, okay, so now we got to switch it over.
I will add to, um, just, I, I was at a member visit just last week with the mighty village of Champion in southwest Alberta, and they have a problem there in that small village with the lack of preventative and wraparound services. And, uh, it was quite, uh, eye-opening for me when they went through that. So i- it's across the province, and I think collecting those stories from those smaller communities as well really helps us to drive that message home to, to the government.
Not just a big city problem, but everywhere, okay. Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you, Constable, Constable Tang.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks to the delegation, always love having you all here. Uh, just want to follow up on Constable Stevenson's question, um, you know, we've seen Bill fifty, Bill fifty-four, premiers addressed yesterday. They're coming at us so fast, I feel like we haven't had time as a board to reflect and think about and process and think about how to respond. But I'm guess, I'm, my question for you is with all those introductions of, um, whether it's new legislation amendments, what are you hearing from, um, your members? Uh, what are you hearing from, you know, like, what's the sentiment out there?
It's exactly that. We're getting a barrage of new legislation being introduced and not having time to digest it and really figure it out, which is why Alberta Munis staff is playing such a big role in that they're able to dissect it, come back with, um, maybe some missed opportunities, unintended consequences, and things that, um, might have a bigger impact to municipalities than either the province is letting on to or the understanding that we have with that too. So, um, one of the things I think we've done well since last year's spring sitting where there was zero consultation and zero, um, follow-up, is this year now, we've, uh, had the opportunity for Municipal Affairs Minister to do a webinar with our members. Um, we're following up with a webinar from our members, getting the feedback, um, maybe some of the issues we have with the new legislation, and then reintroducing that back to the minister and his staff, uh, to try to get some amendments done. I had a conversation with Minister MacIver on Sunday. He's already committed to making amendments to the natural person powers, uh, and is contemplating potentially some other amendments coming with some of the other legislation there, including what's mandatory for those services with the ICF. So I think we have a far better relationship now with the province than we did a year ago. And the fact that they're willing to come forward, have webinars for our members, uh, and then still be willing to listen to some amendments or potential amendments, uh, coming back into legislature, um, shows that they are listening and understand that not everything needs to be maybe pushed through or rushed through.
And so just to, I guess, maybe better understand what that means in terms of the focus on amendments. Um, the bill's going to happen, there's nothing we can do to pull back on it, so let's focus on how to make it better. So for example, we're going to do away with code of conduct bylaw, but we're going to try to amend whatever that looks like. So there's still some level of accountability? Is that the goal?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and whether that becomes something that we look at with OHNS and members of council, um, being able to be held accountable through that route if there is no code. Um, and then just, I think it speaks volumes for members of council and holding each other accountable, um, and calling out bad behavior, uh, which is unfortunate. Um, we have gone through many years of council working together without a code of conduct, and I would hope that while we get into an election, we show the importance of how working as a team and working together, treating staff with respect, treating the public with respect is, is very important. And I look forward to a speedy redraft of a code of conduct for Alberta as a whole, and then having the opportunity to have a provincial ethics commissioner, um, where you're getting, um, direction from one person as opposed to investigations happening ad hoc throughout the province by different investigators where you might not see that consistency. So I'm just hoping that we have that new code of conduct soon after this next election in October.
The amendments are, as you say, we're trying to make legislation better, but as one of my colleagues in Calgary often say, at least we can try and make it less bad.
Uh, yeah, no, thank you for that. I just, I think, I think there's certainly, um, it's kind of a pathway, uh, forward, and I, I just wanted to elaborate on that, so thank you. Um, maybe just in my final minute, you know, Dylan, you said that with FCSS, a lot of ministers or caucus members have expressed they would want to come and see how some of these prevention programs are happening and what kind of impact they are. I mean, I personally, I haven't seen any caucus members, you know, visiting, um, uh, programs here, but I'm, I'm wondering if that's happening in the, in the, in the, in, in other parts of the province. Um, with Bill twenty, you know, there is a component of municipal orientation for new, newly elected officials. Do you see a value in a simultaneous orientation for like a munis one-on-one for MLA so they know how municipalities work? Uh, you can serve.
Yeah, personally, I think it would be awesome if our MLAs would commit spending the time learning about how municipalities work, and I'm sure we as an organization would be enthusiastic to provide any time they want with that. Um, it, it definitely is hit and miss by area of the province, what I'm hearing from members, how engaged MLAs are. There are some government MLAs that are very engaged with their local communities and some that aren't. But I think an important point is, I don't think you solve your issues in Edmonton until we solve our issues in Grand Prairie. And I know we don't solve our issues in Grand Prairie till issues are solved in Peace River. And there is that funneling effect across the province, and I really do think, and I love that I'm seeing the nodding heads. I, I really do think this is something where it's, besides the government, it might be most visible in some ways in Edmonton, but this really is something that all Albertans need for the sake of Edmontonians as well as those rural Albertans.
Yep. Thank you, thank you for stressing that, absolutely. Uh, Constable Salvador?
Yeah, thanks so much. Um, really appreciate you being here, um, and, and excellent conversation so far. I just had a lingering question on, um, local infrastructure funding as well. I know, you know, one of the, one of the figures that I've referenced in the past, even when talking to community members, um, is just the drop per Albertan, I think it was four hundred and twenty, uh, down to one fifty. And that always, um, comes as quite a, quite a surprise and shock in the conversations that I'm sharing them in. I guess I'm just wondering, yeah, like, can you, can you give us a sense of, you know, is there, is there that recognition that we are facing pretty extreme pressures associated with population growth? Um, and that that infrastructure funding needs to, needs to keep pace, or are we, uh, risk becoming, you know, less competitive and less attractive?
There, there is an acknowledgement that we are underfunded. Uh, we've pointed out to the province that the local government fiscal framework, um, works, but the funding pot is too small, and so we've been asking for an extra billion dollars on top of the seven hundred and twenty-two that they started with. And I think we're up to eight hundred and thirteen this year. It'll drop a little bit for next year, but we are absolutely underfunded in that pot overall, and we should be closer to two billion dollars as opposed to just shy of one billion dollars.
And can you just, um, just help me understand, is there, is there a formula? Or does it, how does it, how does it increase over time, um, and scale?
It rises and falls with the provincial revenue. And so that was one of the things that we advocated, advocated for. Um, before it was, we would get half of what the provincial revenue increased or decreased, uh, and we advocated for a one-to-one. So as the dollar or the percentage increases for the provincial revenue, it also cre- increases for LGFF at a one-to-one scale.
Okay, well, I really, really appreciate you sharing that, um, and obviously an incredibly important point. Um, yeah, you know what, I think the vast majority of my questions were asked and answered by other colleagues, so just want to again express my gratitude for all of your work and for spending some time with us today.
Thank you, Constable Salvador, Constable Paquette.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always good to speak to people who are loyal to the oil. Uh, so I just, um, I'm, I'm wondering about, uh, you know, uh, Mayor Gandom, you, you spoke about ideological approaches to some of these social issues. I'm wondering if there's an openness, uh, or that you've seen, uh, from the province to set aside sort of ideological approaches either way and, uh, proceed with data-driven and evidence-based approaches? I appreciate that you've been sitting on that little slogan, oil for the loyal, or oil, loyal to the oil for over an hour. Okay, we've got that on record that you said loyal to oil. Please continue. I recognize that you are absolutely on record. Uh, no, I haven't seen a change in provincial mandates, um, taking, going away from ideological versus data-driven. So no, I haven't seen it yet, but the advocacy is still there by many municipalities who are struggling with the social issues in their communities. Okay, yeah, because I think it's, uh, there's some mounting evidence that we can all see with our eyes. Okay, so next, I am curious, uh, there was a statement about, um, illegitimate, uh, um, dollars, uh, from the federal government and, or legitimate dollars. And so that, that basically implies that there could be illegitimate dollars, and I was just wondering if you had an expansion on that. Not, not dollar for dollar, Constable Paquette, it was, um, the federal government had come in with some housing money for Alberta, um, and then the next day or the next week, they had gone to B C and significantly increased that funding for housing first. Um, and so that was one of the examples the province had given, that Alberta wasn't receiving its fair share, uh, which is why they implemented the, um, contracts between municipal and federal governments had to be run through the provincial government for any funding. Uh, and then they've set parameters in when a minister has the ability to approve it and when it needs to go to caucus or when they're making that decision based on a provincial priority. Okay, do you mind if I dig on, dig in on that for a second? Yep. Okay, so does that mean that their goal is to advocate for more dollars for, um, municipalities? And if they cannot get more dollars, does that mean that they will turn down dollars or we will still get that money? That would be speculation. I think that they are advocating for more dollars. What happens whether or not we get it, um, is yet to be seen.
Okay, so it's not sort of a. If, if I may, Constable Paquette, what, what ended up happening was the federal government came in and talked to both the, the major cities Calgary and Edmonton. We came, came to some kind of a deal arrangement, but when the gov- fed went to the B C province, they went and talked to the entire province and got far more funding on a per capita than we did here in Alberta. So that is their, their philosophy is that if they go through the province, they will get more from the feds.
Okay, and if they fail in their quest, uh, do we still get the dollars anyway? Uh, is there a fallback there? And that, is it an all or nothing discussion? Do we know? Or is it, um, we'll do our best and, uh, you know, if, if it turns out that we can't increase those funding, uh, dollar issues, municipalities will still receive what was offered.
Were you going to ask that on next weekend's Ask the Premier?
Uh, I was not, uh, I would, I would not get an actual answer.
Uh, unfortunately, I don't have one either.
Well, uh, I think that caps it. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Constable Paquette, Constable Danz.
Thank you, um, around December last year, uh, some municipal advocates in Edmonton got a letter from MacIver saying that, uh, the province of Alberta respected local infrastructure, respected local decision-making, et cetera, et cetera. Um, since then, obviously, the tone has changed, and we have a minister who's making pronouncements into, um, local infrastructure decisions in a municipality. Um, what would you say is the level of concern around local autonomy and decision-making from other members of present Alberta?
I guess I would say the concern is extremely high, um, given the, um, communication that was received by the city of Edmonton, uh, from the minister. It is a little frustrating that they would, uh, or that they would step into what is seen as Edmonton jurisdiction. Um, in other municipalities, we're seeing commentary where, do you need this? Or on the other hand, you do need this. So we're not sure exactly where it's coming from, um, aside from they want more information is what we're being told. Where it goes from here, I'm not sure, and where it ends, I'm not really sure. That would be more of an ideological question, I guess, so, yeah.
We've, yeah, I've, I've talked to other municipalities who have said, you know, like, school boards are always worried about the abolition of school boards since ninety-four. The same thing that will be re- be replaced with a deputy minister and twelve deputy, assistant deputy ministers for Calgary and Edmonton or whatnot. Um, I've also heard it from arts groups that they're concerned, uh, Governor Ron DeSantis in Florida, for instance, um, defunded fringe festivals because he wasn't pleased with their content. Uh, we've heard, I've heard that's from arts groups here, I've heard this from community groups as well too. Will we be allowed to rent our halls to certain groups? I've even, yeah, so I'm just wondering if, if you think municipalities are appropriately worried or is this still just seems like a, an Edmonton problem?
Well, I, I think this is something I'm hearing every time that provincial powers, or sorry, every time municipal powers are eroded by provincial legislation, I'm hearing, uh, equal outrage from across the province. When, uh, party politics were imposed on city councils, when code of conduct was taken over, when the way that we count ballots, when this provincial priorities act so that we can't sign federal govern- federal government papers. I'm actually hearing louder outrage often from our very rural people than our urban people. So I really don't think this is a big city versus the province issue. I think this is, uh, one order of government not respecting another order of government as being duly elected issue. And to be blunt, I think we, all of us as municipal leaders need to do a better job. It just means that we need to up our game. Not that we're doing a bad game now, but when we're under threat, I think we just need to up our game even more to assert ourselves as the duly elected representatives of the people that we represent. And that is, and we just need to be better as a municipal sector, uh, when we face these.
On a, on another, on another, oh, sorry. Um, on, on the topic of Canada, um, I've heard that the provincial government may be looking at, uh, trying to align a, a separatism-style question on the municipal election ballot. Is that something you've been hearing as well too? And what role would Alberta municipalities be playing in sort of providing any, any commentary, fact-checking, whatever, whatever about that? Like, kind of like the referendum on equalization last election.
Yeah, we, we haven't really had an opportunity to discuss that since the last election as, as a board or even as an executive. Um, I'm sure we will at some point have that conversation. The reference of whether it's just an Edmonton thing, uh, just wanted to mention, I'm a city of Calgary councillor, and have you heard of something called the Green Line? So no, it's not an Edmonton-only situation.
Excellent, glad to hear that. But on the, on the, the Canada question, um, how did, so, am I, am I hearing correctly, Alberta municipalities didn't really engage on it last time? It just sort of, it's kind of like, like individual municipalities sort of the equalization question?
No, Alberta municipalities does, the work that we do in advocacy and making sure that there is information going out there. Uh, so we would have done the same thing with, um, the difference that would have been made with equalization. We've done the same thing with our research on property taxes and how, um, each order of government collects their taxes and how much is contributed, where, what you get for your money. So we will be fact-based, um, we will be a fact-based organization, no different than when if, when or if that referendum question comes. The only difference that's been made is that the threshold has been lowered for that question to come forward. And after hearing the announcement yesterday from the premier, it sounds like that this would be a question coming in two thousand and twenty-six if the referendum met its threshold. So it doesn't sound like it would be coming from or through a municipal election, but, uh, its own referendum through the province.
Unless municipalities voted to put it on the ballot themselves.
Sure. But again, that's, I mean, if you're driven by a petition in a municipality to change a bylaw, to have that referendum question, it still has to be driven through that petition process.
Let's hope so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Constable Janz. Constable Stevenson, can you take the chair, please?
I have the chair.
Yeah, I think some clarity on the whether B C got more money than Alberta on housing. I think there are two programs that are being confused. One is the Housing Accelerator Fund, which is a law which is a grant funding that offered support based on criteria, population criteria. So Alberta B C got based on that. I think where ministers confusing is the B C Build program, which is a repayable loans offered by federal government to to provinces. And Alberta was offered the same deal, but Alberta refused to sign that deal. So it's not. So I think there's confusion around that somehow they're that that we are Edmonton and Calgary got some favorable deal compared to other cities. That's not the case.
Mayor Sohe, I would be delighted to know that that's the answer. We haven't really gotten any actual information. We are simply regurgitating the information that the Alberta government gave us. So thank you for clarifying.
I'll send you that B C Build link that describes that program more in detail. The is there opportunity now that we were successful on G Pod? I think G Pod advocacy is a good example how all municipalities can work together and advanced our shared goal because a large number of municipalities were losing money. Yes, we were losing more as a city. But every other many other municipalities were losing and benefited every everyone. Are there opportunities for us to work with province on? There are a large number of other properties in cities that are exempted from taxes, whether they're universities, hospitals, schools, nonprofits, social housing. We don't want to tax them because they do provide a valuable service, right? But having municipalities having the only revenue-raising tool is property taxes. We end up losing a lot of revenue that they otherwise would pay. In our case, it's close to three hundred million dollars that we lose, right? Is there opportunity for us to engage with provincial government around having a conversation whether they should be providing us additional grant in lieu of taxes that we are losing? Because those are basically provincial buildings or federal buildings or social sector buildings, right?
Very much. Thank you, Your Worship. It sounds very much like you're writing a resolution for Fall Convention twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
In all seriousness, though, that would absolutely be something that you'd bring forward as a resolution. Get the member support on that and then that drives the the horsepower of Alberta municipalities.
Yeah, let me let me think about that. Kind of like every municipality has schools.
Absolutely.
Many municipalities have hospitals. And and, you know, yeah, because this is this is recognizing we have only one tool to raise revenue, which is property taxes.
Alberta Munis did a great job of advocating for that G Pod as well as the city of Edmonton. So I think coming out of our next Fall Convention with a resolution pushing for that advocacy would be a great first step in that.
Okay, let okay, I'll I'll contemplate on something over time, right? So that's it. I really want to thank you. I'll take the chair back. I'll take the chair back and I'll really want to thank you on behalf of council colleagues, behalf of Edmontonians, the work you do and how your advocacy has benefited Edmonton in in many, many, many ways. And we look forward to our ongoing collaboration. We are huge supporters of your work. Yeah, good. All right. Okay, that concludes all the questions. Okay, we have motion on the floor now. Anyone to speak to the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Constable Paquette, that was Constable Paquette, right? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just want to thank the representatives who are here today. They they put in a lot of time and effort, a lot of hours. And this is a pure service to Alberta, to Albertans and to municipalities. And it's not lost on us that they have many late nights timely from family and home in order to do this work. And it's much appreciated and does not go unnoticed. To have the voices of Alberta municipalities to advocate for us is is really a powerful thing and to make the case to the provincial government that the people of this province live, work and play and hope and dream and suffer and built in our communities. We are the frontline, the direct connection to these folks. And the people who have come to speak to us today about these issues know that intimately. And so as the voice of Albertans, they are doing incredible work. We're glad to have them as partners and and as leaders. And, Mr. Mayor, I could not be more proud of the work that local representatives do in trying to help the province understand that we are the lifeblood of this province. We are the voice of this province. And what we want is stability, economic growth, and a recognition that where the people are is not only where the economic activity happens, it's not only where our children are raised to dream about their future, but this is also the heart of our province, our communities. And these folks know that intimately. And that's why we're all going to be saying, go oil tonight. Thank you.
Constable Tang.
I mean, I I think I see these folks a lot more than my my colleagues, but I just want to say, you know, I really appreciated my time serving on the board. It has been really eye-opening and and I always walk away from meetings and visits to different municipalities across the province, how similar rural and urban community issues are. On F C S S, for example, in one of the regional meetings in Telfield recently, you know, we we made sure to talk about the point about when we have prevention services, even in small towns, villages, rural communities, it benefits big cities because it takes that burden off of us as well. And so there is huge values in advocating together. I want to commend, you know, also the staff for Alberta municipalities for always like the really sound, excellent factual-based research you do that educates not just elected officials and, you know, our administrations, but also Albertans. And so I'm really looking forward to this research project coming out and how that will reach people perhaps, you know, wider than what our individual municipalities can reach. And I really appreciate the ongoing collaboration with our administration for that for 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 those joint advocacy. I think the one thing that really weighs on my mind looking ahead for the coming years is this issue of local autonomy. I think it's going to be, I think, the single biggest issue affecting local decision-making. It's going to fundamentally change the way communities feel, the sentiments out there. That's real. And I don't, you know, for all the conversations we have about how to address kind of some of these priorities, I'm not sure what the path is forward, but you are there to maintain that open communication, to collaborate in good faith. And I hope that will always be reciprocated by the province. So just want to share that and and thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Constable Tang. Constable, now to close.
Thanks. There we go. Much better. Thanks, Mayor Sohe. So, yeah, just I wanted to sort of echo my thanks, I guess, both to to all my board colleagues and and the A B Muni staff. I'll start before I move into more of a detailed thanks. Just want to echo Counselor Tang's comment around local autonomy. It's something we've just started to really talk a little bit more of at the at the board. And I expect as a as an organization, it is something we need to be a little more invested in because we're seeing the provincial government really try to insert themselves a lot more into a number of areas. And and it is a concern, not just here in Edmonton. Obviously, we we had a recent example of where we had a minister come and do a town hall about what what is clearly a local issue, clearly not within the jurisdiction of of the provincial government. And and that's troubling, especially when their first action could have been engage the local representatives first, talk to them, have a conversation, and then decide if they wanted to do more. So I think as as a board, and I know this isn't the only example, this is the Edmonton example, but we're starting to see more and more of that across the province. We've seen it in Calgary. We've seen it in other areas. So as a board and as an organization, I think we need to be a little more firm on this and and making sure, you know, so that I don't think it's a joke when we say Munis one-on-one would be quite nice for the MLAs and the ministers. I think it would really help them understand how how governance works locally. It is very different, you know, it's it's public. We're having this conversation in public. We have these we have these dialogues. We get to understand from folks. And that's not how the province works. And and that's okay. They've got a different system, but they need to know how we work so that we can make sure we're making the best decisions for the folks we've all been elected to serve. And just carrying that through, I think, as we've heard today, a lot of similarities across the province, as mentioned, you know, I've I've gone as part of my time on this board to municipalities of all sizes, including some of the smallest villages. And more often than not, the issues are similar. The scale might be a bit different, but but you hear a lot of the same feedback. When I'm in the villages, they're talking about infrastructure funding because their utility lines are at end of life. And the cost to be able to do their one main street is far more than their municipal budget will ever allow for. And so things like LGFF are critically important for them to to actually be able to survive and provide the services that people expect. As mentioned by by Trina, we saw just a couple of months ago, I think it was March twenty-first, we were out in Red Deer and then Blackfolds and Pinoka. Red Deer, they were talking about things like mental health and addictions, where, yes, they have a recovery center that is full and they don't have post-recovery housing. So there are people waiting to get into that recovery center who can't because there's nowhere for the folks who have finished their treatment to actually go. And so we see that not just in Edmonton and not just in Calgary and not just in Red Deer. It is starting to impact everywhere. I remember going to Bonneville a year and a half ago or two years ago. And they were talking about how it's the first time they've really ever had people experiencing homelessness in their city. It might be a small number, but it was it was more than zero. And how do you deal with that? And and so that's the importance of this organization and and the advocacy I've seen through this organization. So finally, just just because this I'll be ending the my term as as the executive or vice president, whatever my position title is. I don't know what my board title is. Just I want to echo the the thanks to all of the A B Muni staff who work tirelessly each and every day. We've got rock stars on that staff doing amazing work, finding ways to navigate the complexities of the variety of issues. And they put together some of the best reports I I see are always thoughtful in their contributions to how we try to advocate when when we are when we try to be a little more firm and when we try to be a little more conciliatory and and work and thoughtful. There's been a pretty big evolution over the years throughout this organization, and that's a testament to the staff, but also then to the board. As Counselor Paquette mentioned, you know, I think Counselor Tang and I have the easiest job because the meetings are here in Edmonton. So, you know, when meeting day happens, we're just going to the south side. These folks are coming in from all parts of the province, literally traveling hours upon hours upon hours to come here to do the work, giving up plenty of time from their families because, of course, it's it's just such an incredible body of work. So I want to thank this this executive here, the entire board, the folks I've had a chance to work with over the last six years. It's been it's been a delight and and it's a great reminder that folks, part of what I love about the municipal thing, folks from across all the ideological backgrounds can come together and work together to make things better in the province. So thanks for that great work.
Thank you, Constable Nak. Just two seconds over. Just two. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, so please vote.
Thank you, Counselor Paquette.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Janz. We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. Okay, we are done with the public reports. Can someone move that we go on camera, please?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Constable Rice, second by Constable Wright. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Paquette. Thank you, Counselor Janz. We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. We'll be back in five minutes.
And I second that too.
Okay. We are back in public, right? So motion is made in public, seconded in public. We have motion on the floor, so please vote.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Hamilton.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Grant. We have all the votes.
Display the votes, please. That is carried. So there was 5.1. We dealt with 7.1. Motion spanning none. Those are motions or motions without customary notice? See none. We are adjourned.